Thank you all for coming this morning and join us for this meeting. I'd like to welcome all invited guests and elected officials, Gary Gullidge. I'd like to call to order the October 22, 2019 work session agenda. Reminder everyone to turn off the mobile devices, please. Brian, would you bring up signing sheet? I'd like to welcome Pastor Gene Morehouse with Westside Christian Church to come up and do a invocation and pledge. Would everyone stand this?
You usually do not find me in a pink tie, but this is Cancer Awareness Month. In 93, my wife died of breast cancer and was not saved. My granddaughter died in 96 from leukemia. And I just went through my wife having heart surgery and that, and she's going back to the doctor today, so I won't be able to stay for the meeting. I just want people to be aware of these things. So let's go to our Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, sometimes things come our way that we just don't understand. Sometimes we look for our leaders to lead us and guide us. May you give them direction. Give them the heart for the people and the people around them that they love and encourage one another, lift one another up before your throne, Lord. And we ask that you be with our first responders. They have such a hard job and so many people are making it rougher on them. But may we always realize they're there to help us, to lift us up and encourage us and protect us. And dear heavenly Father, the doctors and the nurses have been so great here in this county. And we ask, Lord, that you be with this election that's coming and those who vote that they may prayerfully think about who they're voting for and why they're voting. And dear Lord, each and every one of us as individuals, may we be uplifting and encouraging to one another. As I said before, Lord, there's a lot of things I don't understand, but I know you're in control. Help us to understand you and to love you and to love your Son that gave His life for us, that we may have an eternity in the place He's preparing for us. In the name of your Son and our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, all God's people said. Amen. Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Under the minutes, the October 8, 2019 work session minutes and October 8 board meeting minutes and October 11, 2019 special call meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, under this week's positively Paulding, I'd like to turn it over to Sandy to talk about it.
So this is Breast Awareness Month, October. As most of you know, that I have gone through breast cancer the last year and a half, two years. I had all my treatments. My final surgery is tomorrow. I'll be done. Thank you. But I just want you to know that it is very important to go get your mammogram. If you don't want a mammogram, go get the thermogram. Just do something, check yourselves. If you think something's wrong, it might be. The doctors might not see it, the mammogram might not see it, but pressure your doctors to test further. Something might be there, like it was for me. They didn't find mine until a year later, and I had gone to the doctor a year before, had a mammogram and ultrasound, and they didn't find it because it had woven itself through my tissue. It's a rare, very rare way that it grows. So please, if you feel something and you know something's there, get checked because most likely it is.
Thank you.
I'm Ashley Gullett with the Paulding County Human Resources Department. As part of our wellness initiatives and October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we had Quantum Radiology and our Mobile Mammography Unit come out yesterday onsite to do mobile mammograms. Our goal for the day was 20, and we reached 29 women here on campus. I have Leslie here with Quantum Radiology to kind of go over the importance of early detection.
Thank you, Ashley. And yes, we are Quantum Radiology and we offer mobile mammography throughout metro Atlanta and parts of Florida. Here, we came yesterday to screen women, and we did, like Ashley said, we were able to screen about 29 women. It is very important for early detection because one in eight women are diagnosed with breast cancer annually. Thank you, Ashley, for inviting us to come out to Paulding County to be able to screen your staff.
Thank you for coming out. We also have another special treat. We have Kristen from Q 99.7. I'm sure many of you probably listened to her on the radio. They're also tying in with Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we would like to have her speak a little bit as well.
Thank you so much. So yeah, when the Burt Show heard that Quantum Radiology had reached out and CW 69 had reached out, our core demographic is women, and we know how important Breast Cancer Awareness Month is and early detection is. We want to make sure that you take care of yourself, you get those mammograms, that way you get early detection. We just, it made so much sense for the Burt Show, Q 99.7, Quantum Radiology, to come out to Paulding County and support you guys and your health initiative.
Thank you so much. So we appreciate everyone's support. We hope that you continue to follow us this month as we send out more information on breast cancer awareness. And again, thank you so much for your time.
Under invited guests, we have none. Under bid awards, one approved the purchase of stream mitigation credits for the Richland Creek Reservoir Water Supply Program from Applewood Mitigation Bank, $2,928.29 at $90 per credit for a total of $263,546.10. Ms. Pollard and Ms. Assmore?
Okay. Do you mind going ahead and reading number two as well, and let's just talk about both of them at one time?
Yes. Number two, approved purchase of stream mitigation credits for the Richland Creek Reservoir Water Supply Program from Alicia...
Alacalsey?
Alacalsey Mitigation Bank, I'm sorry. $8,422.34 at $18 per credit for a total of $151,602.12.
Today, we have quite a few bid awards, so I've asked for quite a bit of assistance. I don't want to spend that much money by myself. So we did receive bids last week for these mitigation credits, and they are a bit challenging to explain, so Laurie's going to address some of those.
A few months ago, we purchased some credits, and I had explained that we would be having to issue another RFP for the remaining credits. And this is that second RFP, and it will be the last one for the reservoir. We have, we issued the RFP for both the primary and secondary service areas. The primary area is closer in to the project. It is the preferred set of banks under our 404 permit for purchasing credits. Because in the last round of going out and reaching out to the banking community, we had included both, and we had exhausted the primary at that point, but we were extending the dates. So we inquired of the primary and secondary at the encouragement of the Corps, and we received a, one bid from the primary service area and then bids from, proposals from the secondary service area as well. Applewood, this is the remaining credits available through the Applewood Mitigation Bank. They actually had a pending purchase that was released, making a few more credits available in our service area. And then the Alacalsey, the remaining credits are available in the Alacalsey Bank, which is up in far north Georgia. There are differences in both when these banks were created, as well as their location and property values that lead to differences in, significant differences in the per credit price. But we are recommending that we purchase those remaining credits within the primary service area and then reach out to the second, have the secondary service area be the remaining credits, and that fulfills our 404 requirements.
Laurie, what was the average, though? Wasn't it like 28, 38?
It was 32, 32 and change is what the average cost of what we paid for credits. The bulk of the credits that we purchased were purchased at a cost of $29 per credit. And they, we had anticipated being able to buy all of our credits from that bank, but our contract did have a provision in there that they had a commitment and that the other purchaser did have to begin purchasing their credits, which meant that they did not have the remaining credits for us.
How did that line up with the industry standard?
Credit purchases are going up. I will tell you that that average cost is less than our second low per credit price back in 2016.
Thank you. I'm sure there's a lot of people watching this thinking, what in the heck is she talking about? But you know, even through reading, and as much as, you know, my background is still hard to explain to someone what you're really talking about, but thank you. Under bid awards next, number three would be approved purchase of office furniture for the Adult Detention Law Enforcement Center consisting of seating, tables, miscellaneous shelving, whiteboards, and children's furniture to office creations in the amount of $481,814.54. Ms. Pollard?
And we'll do number four as well, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you. And number four, approved purchase of office furniture for the Adult Detention Law Enforcement Center consisting of desks, cubicles, and storage for offices to Advantage Office Supply in the amount of $326,297.
Okay. Each one of these vendors are state contract. They hold state contract for office furniture. And Amy Tisenczek with CPS, as well as the Sheriff's Office, has worked for quite a few months, I believe, to go between the two of them to get the best cost that they could for the county. And so because these were state contracts, we didn't actually go out to bid, they just worked with those two to get the best possible cost. So I'm going to ask Amy to come up and kind of give you how she, the analysis and how they arrived at each one of these vendors.
Good morning. So this process has taken us quite a while to get where we are, but we feel that where we ended up is it's giving you the biggest bang for your buck. We've been working with furniture vendors since last December. Actually, we reached out to a company here in Georgia called Georgia Correctional, and they're usually pretty competitive with their numbers, so we really thought that they were going to give us great numbers. We got back their pricing, and it was well over budget what we had. It was significantly over budget at approximately 1.6 million. So back to the drawing board, we had to go. We went, reached out to a few other vendors to start working with, to get into budget. We've been working with them, gosh, since the beginning of the year, honestly, to go through several revisions, several different options for the furniture. We finally decided to split the package up because, you know, one vendor was not as competitive in some items and another was. So instead of awarding the whole package to one vendor, which would have actually cost you more, we decided to split those packages up. So the Sheriff's Office have been over to both vendors to see some of the representative furniture and to see what they would actually be getting. So obviously, Advantage Supplies a lot of furniture here in the county, so we've actually taken a couple of field trips to some local companies to see that furniture. And then also Office Creations, they're based in Norcross, so we went over there to see what products they had. So Sheriff's Office has been able to really sit down, touch, feel this furniture, which is extremely important, especially when you're talking about, you know, seating is very important. You know, there's a lot of differences from a $99 chair to a $300 chair. So, you know, these are things that we want to make sure are going to last for years and years and have great warranties. So kind of where, short story, where we are now is breaking that package up between Office Creations and Advantage. And shelving is actually, I'm taking on shelving myself. I'll be ordering, going out, getting pricing on metal shelving. The Sheriff's Office, I've coordinated with Colonel Hunton, and we feel that some of the inmate labor can assemble that shelving. So that'll also save, save some money on that side.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions? Number five to...
We have, we have one more comment about that is, one of the questions that came up is what's, what furniture are we, existing furniture are we using? Is this all new? And if so, what are we going to be doing with that? So the Sheriff's Department is prepared to kind of address that question.
Good morning. The, I don't want folks thinking that the sheriffs cut the reins loose, and I've gone hog wild on furniture because that's the last thing I want to do, is spend money on furniture. But working with Ms. Amy with CPS, we've worked diligently to get the pricing down as low as we can and being very conservative, buying just the furniture that we need right now, not for the future positions and things of that nature. Our current furniture is approximately 20 years old. A lot of it's been piecemealed together through donations, through Lockheed. It's, I mean, it looks pretty rough. It's pretty bad. And the stuff that is good, if things go through and fire takes over where the Sheriff's Office is currently located at, there's still some good furniture that they could be able to use there. We're also planning on using some of the good furniture for the DTF building that we're building currently. So they'll be able to utilize that furniture as well. And then some of it I'm going to take with us to the new facility so that when we do get positions filled, we'll have something that we can work out of right then, and we don't have to necessarily have to order stuff right away, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
One more comment, that first two items for the mitigation credits, they are funded through the reservoir bonds. It's built into the budget. And these two items are coming from the furniture FFNE, so Furniture Fixtures and Equipment for the jail, through that, those funding, that funding as well.
Thank you, Tabitha. Any more questions, comments? Next, under bid awards, award the audiovisual services for the Adult Detention and Law Enforcement Center to the lowest responsive bidder, Solutions Z, in the amount of $91,635.13.
This is a typical bid for the new facility for audiovisual services. We received three participants, and the bids ranged from $91,635.13 up to $139,966.3. CPS reviewed the bid, and they are, they have determined themselves, as well as their engineers, that Solutions has priced a competitive bid to furnish those services. And it's also FFNE.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Tabitha. Next, under bid awards, approved the replacement of the security system at the Watson Complex to the responsive bidder, A3 Communications, in the amount of $1,016,120.14.
We moved into this facility in 2008, so the current security system's about 11 years old and has experienced quite a few failures, and those failures have seemed to increase over time. And Will's going to come up and talk about that. He has worked with a selection, a pretty much a security committee to determine what we should do for the replacement of this, this equipment. And they have requested that we replace the security equipment, and he's also going to talk about what that is. So it's not just door locks, it's your video, it's an all-inclusive, and they would like to see us replace the entire security system in the amount of $1,016,120.14.
Good morning. Appreciate you giving me a minute to talk on this. We, we've had some equipment in place for a long time. It's past its life expectancy, and this is a system that we need to depend on daily for staff and citizens who come to the complex. You know, we put a group together consisting of the Sheriff's Office, Marshal's Office, Court Administration, Build and Maintenance, and Information Technology. All these different departments have ownership within this solution. The access control system, while I can't say too much about it due to the sensitivity and nature of it, I do want to inform you and the public that, you know, there's hundreds, if not thousands, of different components, triggers, and alerts that allows public safety to respond to an incident quickly and effectively. So years ago, Brian Nicholas in Atlanta made this a popular issue, and we have to respond to it in a responsive manner. We can't be putting this on the back shelf. We have to respond proactively instead of versus being reactive. So again, this is something that I not only recommend the replacement of, but the board, the committee that we put together recommends a replacement of. We did have one bidder, although we had seven vendors come out and review the facility in an attempt to bid on it. They just did not submit a bid on it. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
That's due to the size of the job, do you think?
Yes, sir. It's a complex environment with a lot of components involved. You know, had it been simpler in nature, we would have had more responses. That's correct.
Can you estimate the life, excuse me, can you estimate the life expectancy of the new system?
The new system, it'll be more digital components instead of analog components, you know, that were put in, you know, nearly a decade or more ago. We'll probably receive about the same expectancy, you know, from seven to 10 years on it as well.
Thank you, Will. Any more questions? Any more comments? Thank you. Next, under the bid awards is award the additional purchase of network switches for the Watson Complex to PC Solutions and Integration Inc. in the amount of $363,747.76.
This one is also related to the reservoir as well as the jail, so it's network switches for both projects. About $57,000 of this is reservoir-related as we get closer to turning it online, ready to flip the switch and make it work. So this will hopefully do that. And then the jail is about $306,000 of this project are network switches for the detention facility. And so Will's going to address those as well.
Again, as Ms. Pollard said, this is for network switches for both the detention center coming up right behind the Watson Complex and the reservoir. These switches will fit well within the environment that we've created for this building back in the fall of last year. It's a necessary component for the communications structure for the offices to communicate internally and externally. I'm pretty excited about the stage where we're at. It means that we are pretty much at starting to supply, you know, for the building for staff occupancy, so it's coming right along. And once you get to this stage, you know, you're putting the final touches on things. So it's pretty exciting for not only me, but probably the community as well.
Thank you, Will. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Will. That does it for the bid awards. Next would be reports from committees and departments. Kelly Comstock with Brown and Caldwell in reference to Richland Creek. Give us an update. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm typing the wrong word in here. Well, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to allow me to come and give you a quarterly update for the progress at the Richland Creek Water Supply Program. We've got some very exciting, different milestones that have been reached, and so we wanted to share some of those with you as well as general progress. First, I'd like to start at the Etowah River intake. We've actually placed the final concrete associated with the overall program. This is where we will be pulling water out of the Etowah River. We've got screens that are submerged within the river bottom that allow flow to go through large pipes into that structure that you see that's under construction, and that's the pump station. There's a wet well that extends down about 40 feet below grade where the water flows into that, and then the pumps pump it up about three and a half miles to the reservoir. So this slab associated with this building was the final concrete that needed to be placed for the overall program, so they've done that. They've installed the pumps, and they're busy starting to do the superstructure associated with the pump station building. The little image you can see on the left, on the right is the shaft from one of those pumps. You can see them in the bottom picture on the bottom right. Those are large 500 horsepower motors that sit above ground, and they pump the water up from that shaft that extends down 40 feet for each one of those pumps. There's a remote electrical building that houses all of the motor starters and drives associated with these pumps, as well as all the controls. And a large amount of ductwork and electrical wiring has to connect those two buildings. So the contractor's been placing that duct bank that you can see on the bottom left project, so that allows all the communication and power to take place. So right now, they're erecting the structural steel. The architectural precast will come shortly after that. The roof will go on, and then they'll really be just starting everything up. So we're excited and hopeful that they'll be ready to start up by the end of the year. We're coordinating with Georgia Power. They're providing power to the, to the facility. They still have to run their feeder. They're working through an easement with the airport. They're going through the airport, and they're very close to doing that work. So we need them to have their power energized by mid-November so that we can start the pumps up in December, and hopefully that stays on track. We're, we're sort of tracking that very closely. At the water treatment plant, all of the facilities are very, very close to completion. It's basically finishing touches, starting up all the mechanical equipment. We've done all the hydraulic testing of the structures and systems and doing final electrical and control system installation and checkout. We've also installed all the signage that's required around the site, and the plant will essentially be ready by early December. We can't start operating the plant until we obviously have water in the reservoir, so the critical path is to start to fill the reservoir, and then as the water comes up, we'll initiate the plant and start water production. To get water... To get water out of the reservoir, the reservoir intake and pump station base basically will, will do that. There are large pumps in this structure. When the water gets to a, a deep enough level, we'll be able to start bringing this, this online as well. Important to note that we have started clearing the final reservoir pool, and so that's been ongoing and progressing very well. At the reservoir intake and pump station, we're doing final checkout on the pumps. We've done all the final grassing and fencing and security system, as well as building signage there, so that, that facility's very close to undergoing commissioning once we have water. And then another major milestone is that we, we topped out the top of the dam. Two-point-six million cubic yards of soil have been placed, and now they're doing the final access road across the top. Safe dams has come out and done their initial inspection, and by doing that, they've allowed us to close the outlet gate, and we've established temporary pumping until the final inspection is complete, then we'll be able to start the, the filling process. The primary outlet structure, that is, is now complete, and we're preparing to set the bridges that will go out upon that. They will be actually set next week. So everything's on track for, for the dam and the primary outlet structure to be available in December to when we're able to start pumping water in. We'll be able to do that. And as I mentioned, we're currently clearing the reservoir pool, so we've got a total of two-hundred-and-eight acres of clearing that has to take place, and we've cleared one-hundred-and-fifteen acres so far. So we're on, on track to being complete December first, which was the timeline that was anticipated associated with that. The finished water pipeline project, we have that in two different phases. Phase one is, is now complete, and phase two, we've completed eight of nine bores that, that had to take place, and we're installing piping at the booster pump station, which is located by the DDS facility out here behind the Watson complex. We're about ninety percent complete with the piping as well, so we're getting very, very close to completion of this project. We anticipate this to be, to be ready by the end of the year as well. So overall, we, we are complete with the raw water pipeline. That's ready to go. Once we get the intake going in December, we'll be able to start filling the reservoir, the water treatment plant, the river pump station, they're all ready to go. So everything's aligning to be done by the end of the year. We're hoping to have a public event. Once we start bringing water into the reservoir, we'll, we'll sort of have a public gathering to, to commemorate that because that'll be, that'll be a major undertaking. And then, then we'll go through the process of starting to fill the reservoir. We anticipate the first thirty feet filling very, very quickly, probably within two to three weeks, depending on flows in the Etowah River. And then the second thirty feet, we're limited to doing two feet per week, and then the final thirty feet will be about one foot per week. So it'll be, it'll be a while before the reservoir's completely full, but between that second and third period, or, I'm sorry, between the, in the second period, we'll be able to start the plant up. So we'll just be looking at water quality. So we're anticipating being able to start the, the treatment through the plant and distributing to Paulding County customers shortly after the first of the year. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Great. Thanks for the opportunity for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming up next, under reports from committees and departments. I know it's kind of hard to fathom with the rain and that we've had this past weekend and yesterday, but Laurie Ashmore is here to talk about the drought update.
Sometimes it seems as though all we have to do is have the chairman schedule a tour of the reservoir or, or schedule a drought update, and we get some rain, right? The, okay, there it is. Here it's coming now. You know, at the beginning of the year, we were talking about flooding, but in the, over the last six weeks, we have had extreme, record-breaking heat and a lack of rainfall in the, in the state of Georgia that has led to a worsening drought condition. And this just shows the evolution of what the climatologists are calling a flash drought. Came up unexpectedly as, with weather systems from the hurricane that, that came in along the coast, and, and we have, we've seen the, this pattern worsening over that last six weeks. The drought monitor for last week has Paulding County being in, in a moderate to severe drought, but a lot of the metro area and north Georgia in extreme drought conditions. And, and so it'll be interesting to see after some of the, some of the rainfall, we had some rainfall, but not enough to catch up the, the deficit for, that we've been experiencing. A Level One drought response being, was declared by the state on Friday afternoon after consultation with climatologists and with water systems. And it, this Level One just requires us to implement public information in the community, making people aware that there, there are, that, that there are some weather-related issues. Some of the systems have actually gotten special permission to move to a Level Two drought because of the condition of their water supplies. Again, pointing to the need for us to have our own water supply. We do have an ongoing water conservation program as part of the, our requirements under the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, and are, are active in that. We, yesterday, we pushed out additional messaging about the drought, and that was done in coordination with the City of Dallas and the City of Hiram. We work very closely when we're in these drought conditions to make sure that our messaging is consistent because really, all people know, a lot of people don't know where their water's coming from, what, who their supplier is, so we want to make sure that we send out a consistent message across the entire county. Generally, people can water their landscape between four PM and ten AM. Those are the, that's the time of the day when watering is most effective. It eliminates the, the hotter part of the day from watering, and that is a year-round. But at this point, we're asking people to water only when needed. You know, as we're approaching the winter months, plants don't need as much water, and we really only need to water those plants when they're starting to show signs of distress. We're just asking folks, asking our customers to just be good stewards of our water resources. So just some other things, just reminders for, for folks about being good stewards of, of our water is regularly check and repair leaks that they find on their, on their plumbing, taking shorter showers and turning off water when you're shaving or brushing your teeth, and running dishwashers and, and washing machines only when you have full loads. And we appreciate everyone's support.
Under public participation on agenda items, we have none. Under consent agenda, discuss action on four items. One, authorize the chairman to approve the donation of three thousand, four hundred and thirty-three point three-seven square feet, which is point oh seven nine of right-of-way to GDOT for PI number zero, zero, one, three, nine, five, zero, which is in post four. Number two is authorize the chairman to sign a lighting service agreement between Paulding County and Inarole Real Estate LLC to bill for ten streetlights along Corporate Drive North and Commerce Parkway that will have a monthly cost of three hundred and twenty-five dollars plus a ten percent administrative fee of thirteen dollars and fifty cents a month, post three. Number three, adopt new classification for utility inspector. Number four, adopt resolution nineteen dash thirty-two, reappointing Ben Amerson to the Paulding County Board of Assessors with a term date beginning January one, two thousand and twenty, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Would anybody like, keep that on the consent agenda, would anybody like to move it to new business, any of these items? Under old business, we have none. Under new business, have discussed action to authorize the chairman to approve two development agreements, one with Costco Wholesale Corporation and the other with Twelve-Sixty Airport Drive LLC for the county's participation in the public transportation and sewer improvements in the form of substantially similar form as set forth in attachments A and B. On this, I would like to turn it to Mr. Baker to talk, and Mr. Jones to talk about it.
Thank you. Before George gives you the, all the information on it, I just wanted to say that, you know, you hear us talk about Team Paulding. We talk about it a lot. We really believe it. This is definitely a Team Paulding agenda item. There's been a lot of work over the last year and a half to get us where we are today, and this is one of the final steps that has really been needed to get this project done and closure to occur in the next, hopefully, the next month or so. But there's been a lot of folks that have worked along to get, get us here, so I just wanted to mention a couple of them, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Of course, George from DOT is gonna speak in a minute, Scott Green, our operations director, and a big shout-out to Chris Robinson from planning, the planning of Community Development Department with all the planning and all the issues that have been involved in this. But the biggest shout-out and the biggest cheerleader and the hardest-working person on this whole project, it's, it's unfortunate that he's not here today, and I'm kind of glad that he's not because I want to brag on him a little bit, and he probably wouldn't want me to brag on him if he was here. Hopefully, he's watching live stream, but it's been our chairman. He has worked day and night. I see Scott shaking his head, yes. He has worked a tremendous number of hours on this project and getting everybody together and working with all the different departments that have been involved with it. And also, Laurie, I see you there. I didn't want to leave you out either, and I appreciate your department and working on it. But the chairman really has done, as they say in the Navy, a yeoman's job on this project, so I appreciate the opportunity to mention that, and I hope when he returns, he won't be mad at me bragging on him, but he definitely deserves the bragging today, so I'll turn it over to George.
Good morning. All right, let me discuss a little bit about the, the commitments that Paulding County has made towards the successful completion of this project. Right now, there's off-site public sewer outfall for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We're going to basically design, bid out, construct, and maintain the east-west roadway that will connect Old Griffin Road, goes on the north side of Dallas Dodge in Gerber Collision Class to the Costco site. That is gonna be up to two hundred thousand dollars, I believe it'll be less than that. And also, construct and maintain a traffic signal at the main Costco access site on Highway one-twenty, and that's roughly about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Total commitment right now, we're looking at is about five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Let me get into the specifics of some of this. The traffic signal was recommended based on a traffic engineering study prepared by Costco and approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation, which is the maintaining entity on Highway one-twenty. You know, we, I'm sorry, they're, you know, they're the, they basically approve all the traffic signals. We actually, in coordination with GDOT, maintain the traffic signals on Highway one-twenty with their permission, all the way from the Cobb Line down to State Route Six. So it makes sense for us to actually be there and bid out and inspect and approve the traffic signal since we're gonna be taking it over anyways. It, it just basically makes sure that we get what we're looking for. We have, you know, experience in constructing and maintaining traffic signals, and we can typically have this work done cheaper than developers and companies being that we, we're not making a profit on it, and also, we're basically removing different layers of subcontractors so nobody's taking their cut out of it. So again, I think this is a good win for us. The signal itself consists of, you know, all the traffic signal-related items such as traffic poles, signal heads, pedestrian equipment, anything to serve the traffic signal. So not any roadway improvements on that part of the project. The third lane on the east-west drive, like I said, it goes between Old Griffin Road and Costco, just north of Dallas Dodge in Gerber Collision. It's about five hundred and fifteen feet long. Basically, that third lane will allow us to have a left and right turn lane at the Old Griffin intersection, and also a left and a right turn lane at the Costco intersection. So basically, it helps serve the development, help improve traffic flow throughout that area once it gets built out, and just, you know, provide additional capacity. We have developed conceptual plans for this. We'll go along and finalize some preliminary engineering plans, bid this out, and get it constructed, and then maintain the roadway. It'll be converted to a public roadway. All this is done, I believe we have a May first construction timetable. I believe we're supposed to have go-ahead sometime around December first, so if that, if that date is met, I believe we'll have no problem in meeting these timetables. And like Frank had said, you know, this is a good step basically towards, you know, improving the, you know, eighty-eight, twelve ratio that Dave is always speaking about. People talk about commercial. This is a good step to actually bring in some tax dollars and kind of reverse that trend. So looking at it from our end, we think it's a worthwhile investment, taking these transportation dollars and putting it toward infrastructure that'll benefit this project, but also additional folks and businesses in this area. And I can answer any questions if you'd like. Do you have any?
Any questions, comments?
I've got some comments I'll make, if that's okay. I wish I had a nickel for every time I've had somebody ask me, when's Costco coming? Is Costco coming? Is Costco still coming? Do you know, do you know any updates about Costco? Back in, earlier this year, at the State of the County address, one of the things that I talked about was developments coming up one-twenty. And of course, Costco is the big one that everyone's been talking about for a while, so we're certainly excited about that. George alluded to the fact that they're gonna be collecting tax dollars for us. It's also worth pointing out that Costco has very loyal customers. We expect that a big chunk of those tax dollars will come from neighboring counties, so we're excited about that. And, and that's great, but I also wanted to highlight, this isn't just any other big-box retail. Costco's a good corporation. We're talking about neighborhood of two-hundred jobs coming into the county on this. Those are good, well-paying jobs, then with opportunities for full benefits for health, dental, vision, retirement. And one of the benefits I thought was neat, Scott gave me an info sheet. It has here at Thanksgiving, they get, employees get free turkeys. But that's fun, and, and it's kind of a neat thing, but it also shows that it's a company that's willing to think outside the box to, to be creative in the benefits that they offer their cust, their employees. As a result of that kind of stuff, they have a very loyal employee base, and, and so they also have a very loyal customer base. And so we're excited about that. I know that I'm, I'm excited to be able to give the affirmative yes, and, and when I'm asked those questions, I think, I really can't tell you how many people have asked me about, it seems like eighty percent of the messages I get from Rebecca is a citizen looking for an update on the Costco situation. And so I'm excited, this is gonna be a good development right there on one-twenty, and it's gonna be good stuff. So we're excited. Thank y'all for everything you guys have done for it, and I know Dave's, as Frank said, put in countless numbers of hours working on this, and it's gonna be great for the county.
Yeah, not just George, Scott, and like I said, everybody. You know, when it, when it was coming about, you know, I'd had to call Chris, or I'd call Laurie, or I'd call George, or Scott, or somebody and get, try to get an update on Costco, you know, and it just seemed like it was different, depending on who I talked with, but it seemed like it's all came together toward the end. And, I mean, Dave, yes, he would send messages at six o'clock on Sunday morning about an update of Costco, so, you know, it was on his mind. You know, it might be a Friday, or a Sunday, or a Monday that he was giving some kind of update. But, you know, in a few meetings that I was able to sit in, I know George and Scott worked very hard with the owners of the property along with Costco to make this happen, so really want to put a shout-out for y'all. Thank you.
I think it's exciting, too, when these big boxes come in. There's a number of franchises that piggyback along, you know, with their studies, and those, I'm excited to see what surrounds this thing, too.
Just think about something you could ask.
Always.
For any of those looking for a job, they pay pretty well, from what I understand.
Next, on new business, discuss action to approve the revision to the- to the alcohol beverage license fee schedule with an effective date of November 1, 2019.
Good morning. By approving a revision of the county's alcohol beverage license fee schedule with an effective date of November 1, it's going to allow us to actually help some of these businesses that are coming into the county in our current businesses. Right now, we feel that the current fees, they're a little high compared to the population of this county. We feel like bringing in new fees will bring us more in line with the surrounding counties with a similar population to Paulding County. And this will also take us a bit closer to fees that are charged in Dallas and Hiram. We've also found that our current businesses and our new businesses have actually struggled to meet these fees. We feel that by lowering these fees, more businesses will be willing to come into our county versus going somewhere else. What we'd like to put forward to the board is lowering our combination distilled spirits, which consists of distilled spirits in either one malt beverage and/or wine, from its current rate of $6,600 down to $4,950, and our full pour, which consists of distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverage, from its current rate of $8,150 down to $6,200. Like I said, that we feel that this is going to help our businesses out as far as getting hit with these fees every year. And it makes it more consistent with counties that have our population, such as Paulding County.
Any questions or comments? Well, thank you for taking time to look into it and look after the business owners that's out there now. Doing so. Thank you. Next, under new businesses, discuss action to approve a bill-pay services contract with the U.S. Payments to add kiosk for the water systems customer payment options.
There you go. Thank you. We have an opportunity at this point to partner with Greystone Power. Greystone Power has been utilizing U.S. Payments as a kiosk service bill-pay provider. And they have a network of kiosks around not only this county but surrounding counties, providing an opportunity for people to make their payments. The kiosks accept credit cards, checks, and cash. And Greystone approached us particularly as they were looking at moving from their 278 location to possibly locate a kiosk and partner with us at our water customer service center to provide a location for a 24-hour kiosk. As our discussions continued, we also identified that one of the things that we have are people who come in, who pay their taxes or conduct other business here at the administration building. We still have some people who would like to be able to pay their bill while they are here. So we have an opportunity to locate a kiosk here in the administration building. The monthly fees in the agreement are for an exterior and as well as an interior unit. What we're looking at is an interior installation that is similar to the one that here at the administration building, similar to what's over at Greystone's office. And this is just a photo of what they've got in theirs. The exterior installation looks a little more like this. But to give you a closer-up look, there's a speaker to it, a touchscreen pad that people can enter their account number and information, a barcode scanner that they can scan their bill, and as well as a way for them to insert cash or swipe a credit card or debit card or even provide a place to pay with a check. So it really provides multiple options for our customers. Greystone has indicated there's still a lot of people that pay in cash and like this option over maybe a web-based payment option or coming into the office during normal business hours. Right now, the U.S. Payments network provides a number of options, including a couple of Grand Foods options, the bales up Highway 61, and then an option out toward, out on 120 South, out toward Drake Town. So it gives us a larger coverage as well as being able to pay at other Greystone locations. So we are looking forward to being able to offer this option to our customers. And that upon the... We're looking with Greystone at relocating their interior unit or getting a new interior unit that will be in service here before they move. And then working on that exterior unit at our customer service center on an ASAP basis. Once the contract is approved, we'll begin the work on the IT side to, for uploading customer information and balances as well as then the importing of the payment information after a customer is paid. I want to thank Scott and Will Lyons and Jimmy Renfro for their help in looking at options as well as for their work to come in getting us up and running.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Ms. Ashmore.
You know, it reminds me, I was talking to a man that works for me. His dad used to have a furniture store at the old Parker's in Dallas. And just a couple of weeks ago, he was talking about how he remembers people would just come in there and pay the power bill, the phone bill, cable, everything there, you know. A little bit before my time, but I think Chuck probably remembers. But then, you know, Friday at the agenda prep meeting, I was sitting there. I'm thinking, you know, this is kind of the same, just, you know, years later. So, you know, it's just good to give people different options. That's it. Under new business, it's a conclusion of our regular business. Under public participation and non-agenda items, we have none. Executive session, we have none. I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I see.